Okay, we are going to call this regular meeting of the Martin County School Board to order. If you would all please rise for the opening prayer by Pastor Lynn Barletta of Visionary Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, thank you for your blessing upon our Superintendent, Superintendent Maine, Chair Powers, all of the board members, principals, staff, and teachers in Martin County. God, we especially ask today for your hand of protection to be upon every single child from kindergarten through elementary school, middle school, and high school. Father, we ask that each of these children would be protected, kept by the power of your Holy Spirit. Especially shield them from those who would prey upon them and stop any form of violence. Set up a strong hedge of protection that they would be kept safe at all times. We also ask that the spirit of excellence would be upon all the leadership, the teachers, the students, the volunteers, every sport, club, and all extracurricular activities. Let peaceable and righteous solutions be found to every problem. Direct this meeting, Lord. Give supernatural wisdom to all in your mighty name. Thank you, Lord. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Falls, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Dieter Lisi.
Here.
Mrs. Roberts.
I'm here.
Mrs. Russell.
Here.
Mrs. Pritchett.
Here.
Mrs. Powers.
Here.
Okay.
Is Mr. Waters the term for today instead of Mr. George?
Mr. George is on his way. He was stuck in traffic. So do I have a motion to approve the agenda with the following items added: 7.03, 14.01, 16.01, items updated 3.03, 15.04, and items removed 7.01, and then items moved to action only 3.05, 06, and 07.
Second.
Have a motion by Ms. Roberts, a second by Mr. Dieter Lisi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now, do I have a motion to pull, to approve the consent agenda with 3.05, 3.06, and 3.07 moved to action only?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Ms. Roberts, a second by Mr. Dieter Lisi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, is there any board member discussion? Anybody have anything today? Okay, seeing none. We have our retirement recognitions. Ms. Armstrong?
Good evening, Board Chair, Board Members, and Superintendent Maine. My name is Shannon Armstrong, and I'm a Director in Human Resources. I have the honor of presenting retirement recognitions this evening. And at this time, I would like to ask the Principal of Felix A. Williams, Sarell Teteau, to come forward so that she may recognize one of our valuable employees who will be retiring from our district after several years of dedicated service.
Good evening, Superintendent Maine and Board Members. It is my absolute pleasure to congratulate Mr. Tony Barrett for his retirement from Martin County School District. Mr. Barrett has been in the district for 27 years. He started his career at the Environmental Studies Center, but he has spent the last decade at Felix A. Williams Elementary School as part of the Fowey family. I have only got to work with Tony for one year. It's been a wonderful, wonderful year. My first impression of Tony was when I first came to Fowey and was unloading my car with a bunch of boxes. He ran out and said, "Stop, stop! What are you doing? I'll do that for you." Got my office all set up was my first impression. Also, the grounds of Fowey, my first impression, were beautiful when I pulled up. The lawn is always manicured. Everything always looks great. The classrooms are always in good repair and clean so that the teachers and students have what they need. Tony takes great pride in the school, making sure that everything is beautiful, clean, and safe. If you ask Tony for anything or say, "Hey, I need this done," he will respond immediately and come and help you with what you need. He is always happy to be at work, always happy with the kids. The kids are going to miss Mr. Tony very much. That's what they know him as. Tony has a wonderful sense of humor and is just a great person to work with for students and for staff. He's helped us through lots of challenges, worked through the COVID challenge, worked through hurricane days last year when we came to school. He was the first one out there picking up things, making sure our campus was safe, and walked me through every step of the way to make sure we were ready to open and ready for business. I do wish that I got to work with Tony longer, but he has earned a retirement, so congratulations, Tony, and thank you so much for everything you've done for the Fowey family. You will be missed.
Congratulations. We appreciate everything you've done for us.
Yep, and bring your family, if you have family here with you, bring them up for the picture as well.
Thank you. Congratulations. Do you want to say a few words?
of service to the Martin County School District. Very much appreciated. Thank you. Okay, next up, we have the Education Foundation.
Good afternoon, Chair Person Powers, Members of the Board, and Superintendent Maine. I'm Lisa Rhodes, Executive Director of the Education Foundation of Martin County, and I'm here with a few of our board members tonight to share some exciting news with you. The Education Foundation of Martin County is excited to announce that we have been awarded $500,000 by the Consortium of Florida Education Foundations and the Florida Department of Education to support the development of resiliency skills in our students. As a trusted partner of the Florida Department of Education, we are committed to working with our school district and community to infuse resiliency resources in schools through community-based programming and locally-driven initiatives to help address rising concerns around youth mental health and well-being. This is a continuation of our work that we started this past summer with the Cycle Two, Getting Ready for Resiliency, and that was an award of about $35,000. And over the summer, we helped launch the Navigate 360, supported that district initiative by providing teacher trainings, creating a pacing guide for teachers, providing site stipend leads, site lead stipends, excuse me, and site lead stipends and training for the coming year. This $500,000 is going to be used for 11 different programs, and I'll just rattle those off for you right now, and you can ask any questions you may have. First, we are going to be revitalizing Character Counts here in the Martin County School District. That's a longstanding program. We actually had training for elementary teachers, elementary school counselors today and secondary school counselors tomorrow. We will also be providing materials and resources for all elementary and secondary schools. Conscious Discipline is going to be taking place at Bessie Creek Elementary and Palm City Elementary. They're going to be receiving whole group teacher training, real-time in-class coaching, Feeling Buddies kits with teacher training, community-wide parent workshops will also be hosted quarterly, and the week-long Institute for Summer Training for 14 teachers to attend the training in Orlando. We are creating or launching an after-school intramural sports mentoring program in all of our elementary schools to teach and reinforce resiliency standards and characteristics by providing coach stipends and materials. We also are going to be purchasing resiliency games, activities, and resources for all school campuses for their extended day programs. Kindergarten readiness backpacks, we're going to purchase 13,000 books that are aligned to the resiliency standards and characteristics for all incoming kindergarteners. We are purchasing classroom library books that are aligned with the new resiliency standards and characteristics. We're also providing training to community groups who work with area youth, that is, youth mental health first aid training, so it's a continuation of what the district is doing here with their staff. We are providing supplemental support to Seawind Elementary for their Leader and Me program. We are providing a part-time resiliency coach to be shared between Indian Town High School and Clark Advanced Learning Center, and we are also funding an additional school social services worker for Martin County School District. In addition, we're going to be purchasing five additional career exploration modules for the EFMC Career Exploration Labs at each of our middle schools, and those include personal finance, employability skills, intro to child development, lifetime nutrition and wellness, and mental health. So I'd like to give a shout-out to Lauren Kowalski, who's not here today, but she's a Martin County School District Prevention Intervention Program Specialist, and her team, the Student Services Team that worked with us all summer and will continue to work with us throughout this year as we implement all of these exciting opportunities.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Maine. I'm Vanessa Muto, the Coordinator of Student Services. I just really wanted to take a minute to say a very special thank you to the Board and Education Foundation for this partnership and collaboration. We are so very appreciative, so thank you again.
Okay, next up, we have our student representative, Austin Connolly.
Good evening, everybody. I'm going to get right to it and start off with the update on Jensen Beach High School. The Key Club and Environmental Club have been working to refresh and expand the school's on-campus garden. The Clubs plan to grow fresh produce that can be donated to the Jensen Beach House of Hope Food Pantry and provide our community with healthy and fresh food. Mark Tornice was recognized by the Jensen Beach Chamber of Commerce as "Our Student of the Month." He was invited to attend the Chamber's monthly luncheon and received a bag full of goodies. The Treasure Coast American Sign Language Social is a new event that is hosted in collaboration with the JBHS ASL Club. This event takes place at the Treasure Coast Mall every fourth Friday monthly from 6:30 to 8:30. All levels of ASL enthusiasts are welcome to attend. ASL Club members are also working to create a short program to teach basic and fun ASL signs to elementary students during extended-day programming. More details will be coming soon. The JBHS Chapter of the National Honor Society recently inducted 117 new members for this school year, which is the school's largest group yet. At Martin County High School, MCHS is looking forward to Homecoming Week. Float building and parade preparation will begin on Saturday, October 21st. All homecoming nominees will be recognized at the annual parade scheduled for Thursday, October 26th at 7:00 p.m. off of East Ocean Boulevard. The Homecoming pep rally will be held on October 27th, at which the final eight homecoming candidates will be celebrated along with the student body. The varsity football homecoming game against Fort Pierce Central High School will take place on Friday, October 27th at 7:00 p.m. There will be a pre-game celebration beginning at 6:00 p.m. to recognize our homecoming court as they are escorted across the field by friends and family. Homecoming Week will conclude with a dance on October 28th in the MCHS gym. Ticket sales begin on October 16th. In a continued effort to bring awareness to causes that support well-being of women, the Voices of Women Club is participating in the Making Strides Against Breast Cancer Walk on October 28th in downtown Stewart. All are welcome and encouraged to attend. MCHS Digital Video Technology Program is excited to announce that On the Prowl, our school news program, is now available on YouTube. Tune into their channel at OnTheProwlMCHS to see all the incredible work our students are putting into this daily news production. Last month, the Martin County Tiger Regiment competed in the Falcon Sound Invitational in Broward County. The Tiger Regiment received superior ratings in music, visual performance, and general effect, receiving best in class percussion and placed second overall in the Class 3A. Congratulations to our Tiger Regiment students for an outstanding performance. The MCHS Speech and Debate Team attended their monthly regional tournament, and the following students received awards in their respective events. Winning first place, Turner Lovell; second place, Miranda Lubin; fourth place, Nina Goyle; and Logan Mitchell; and fifth place, Georgina Ferraro and Cameron Zucker. Sal Yontu and Phoenix Saquera were named September's AFJROTC Cadets of the Month. Cadet Yol Reyes was selected as the AFJROTC FL-937 Public Affairs NCO and was promoted to Cadet Technical Sergeant. At South Fork High School, the Voices of Women Club will be making and selling bracelets to raise money for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Green Club will be participating in Fire Fest at Jonathan Dickerson on October 21st. They will be at the Invasive Species Booth volunteering. Come visit them. JROTC continues to participate in a number of events, including Fall Fest at Crystal Lake Elementary and the Adopt a Road program. The time is now to get your tickets for Drama's performance of Steel Magnolias. Witness the play that inspired the Oscar-winning film and capture the hearts of millions. Advance tickets are available for purchase at showtics4you.com with performances scheduled for the last week of this month.
Thank you, Austin. All right, next up, we have our district update with Jennifer DeShazo.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Members of the Board, and Superintendent Maine. We're going to do something a little bit different this month that Austin and I have kind of been working on, where we're going to tag-team the district updates. You could hear a little bit from him, a little bit more from Austin. So we will kick it right off and let Austin go ahead and present the first slide.
Okay. At Warfield Elementary School, students strive to follow the TRIBE expectations. They aim to be trustworthy, respectful, inquisitive, brave, and exceptional. Tribe is part of Warfield Elementary's Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports Approach to Reward Positive Behavior and Encourage Good Choices. Each school in the Martin County School District uses PBIS in a similar manner, and each school has a relatable acronym to guide students. Let's take a look at this framework in action.
Warriors, yay! Listen, it's a new school year. We are back '23, '24, and guess what time it is? It's TriBucks time! But some of you might be new, like me. I'm new. I'm Mrs. Torres here at Warfield, and I didn't know what these guys were. How you earn TriBucks is by doing the Tribe Expectations, and we're going to have our friends show you what that looks like. Hi, Warriors! We're learning about our Tribe Expectations, and T stands for trustworthy. Trustworthy means that you are telling the truth, you're being honest in every situation, even the ones that are challenging to tell the truth in. Hey, Warriors! R is for respectful. That means you can follow directions and use kind words and actions.
Here at Warfield, I stands for inquisitive. It means that we ask questions and we are observant. We pay attention to our environment and we speak positively on the changes.
Hi, Warriors! Mrs. Hubbard here, just focusing on another letter from our Tribe Expectations, and I wanted to talk about the letter B, which stands for brave. And being brave means that you have a growth mindset and you're willing to try new things. So trying new things can seem a little scary, but they really shouldn't be, because that's the way we learn more, that's the way we grow, and that's the way we get better at everything, is to try it. You won't know until you try it.
Hi, Warfield Warriors! It's Mrs. Sharp in our library. I wanted to talk to you today about our Tribe Expectations with the letter E, which means exceptional. So that means you have integrity and you are always doing your best. You are following the rules, you are following procedures, and you come to school trying your best every single day.
You're going to earn TriBucks by doing your Tribe Expectations. Remember, R-T-R-I-B-E, so when you earn these TriBucks, you're going to get to earn so many amazing things. Warriors, we can do this. We can follow our Tribe Expectations every single day, not just in your classroom, though. You have to follow them in the hallway and at Related Arts and in the Media Center. I believe in you, and I know you can do it. Let's have an amazing year with PBIS.
As Austin shared, all of our schools have different programming, age-appropriate, related to PBIS, where students are motivated to meet these expectations and do their very best with everything they do on campus. The Martin County School District was recently honored with a HOPE Award by the House of Hope. The district earned this award for its longstanding partnership with the House of Hope through the Exceptional Student Education Department's Career Experiences Programs, Martin Sales, and Project Search. The Career Experiences Program provide opportunities for students with special needs to gain and master job skills at businesses and organizations like the House of Hope. Let's take a look.
It was just inspiring.
This room is filled with countless hours of dedication, creative thinking, and lots of patience, but more importantly, this room is filled with hope.
We continue to meet the needs and the challenges that our community faces in really remarkable ways.
The House of Hope Awards celebrates community members, businesses, and partnerships that have helped make a difference in the lives of those who need a helping hand.
We want to thank the school district for this great partnership and certainly thank Jim for his passion.
The Martin County School District's Career Experiences Program was fortunate to be a recipient this year.
We're here to receive an award from the House of Hope for our partnership of over 10 years of providing job skill development for our students, young adults with disabilities. Very grateful for the partnership. So the partnership is mutually beneficial. Our students need to build up their job skills and their confidence. The House of Hope provides the thrift store as well as the food pantry to help us with amazing job coaches like Jim Grace to provide the support that they need as they need it.
You could ask anyone in this room. They don't work with the House of Hope for this recognition. They do it for the people. In our case, the interns.
I just enjoy working with the kids and seeing them grow and seeing them function.
Although humbling to receive this honor, Dr. Elizabeth Jekonowski and Jim Grace were proud to do so in front of district leadership.
We had so much wonderful district leadership support at the event today. That filled my heart.
She and everyone else left this event filled with even more hope than when they arrived.
We could not do what we do to help people move forward without rooms full of people like this, so it's our honor and pleasure to be able to say that today.
We'd like to say congratulations to our Exceptional Student Education Department and all of the teachers, families, and community partners who work tirelessly to provide real-world opportunities that positively impact the lives of our students. Let's give them a round of applause.
The Martin County School District is proud to celebrate National Principals Month. We figured there was no better way to celebrate the impact of school leadership than asking our students to explain what they love most about their principles. This afternoon, we'll hear from students at Pinewood Elementary, Indian Middle, and Willoughby Learning Center about what makes their principles second to none. We encourage you to follow along on our social media channels throughout the month to hear our students share more about their fearless leaders.
Here at Pinewood, we have the best principal named Miss Doyd. She is so nice, and she's positive every single day.
She always takes care of us all day. She always is responsible for this school. She always takes care of this school.
Mrs. Doyd is the greatest principal ever because she is funny and she's friends with Miss Morris, one of the assistant principals.
Here in Indian Town Middle School, we think Mr. Raymond is the best principal teacher because he treats every student respectfully, and he's always there in our good times and our bad times.
Thank you for always being involved and helping us through our IMS career. You're the best.
At Willoughby Learning Center in Martin County, we have an amazing and awesome principal. She has given us opportunities and freedom for flexibility and opportunity in future life. Thank you, Miss Doyd.
Miss Doyd is a very nice person and an amazing principal because she knows how to run a school. Thank you, Miss Doyd.
Dear Miss Doyd, I want to tell you thank you so much for everything that you have done for me. You have been the best principal ever. I know I made things worse sometimes, but we made it through, and I love you so much. Willoughby Ducks, strong forever.
So let's give all of our amazing principals a round of applause. Tomorrow is the day to wear your most creative orange attire in celebration of Unity Day, which is an annual observance where MCSD stands together with peers and colleagues from around the nation for kindness and acceptance while visibly sending a message that bullying has no place in our schools or society. We can't wait to see all of our students and employees celebrating Unity Day tomorrow. Until next time, you can find us wherever you scroll. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jen and Austin, for that wonderful presentation. Mr. Maine?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, Members of the Board. Tonight, I have the distinct pleasure of introducing three new staff members, one new staff member in a position and two who are currently here but will be joining us in new positions. Without further ado, our first new staff member into the Assistant Principal role at Citrus Grove Elementary is Miss Donnell Roberts. So if you please stand and be recognized. Donnell is a longtime teacher at J.D. Parker Elementary, former instructional coach, and most recently, one of our Prevention Intervention Program Specialists here at the district, serving J.D. Parker and other schools. So we really appreciate you did a phenomenal job in your interview. The committee placed you in our top two, and I had the wonderful opportunity to interview you myself and know that you will do a fantastic job at Citrus Grove. So thank you and welcome aboard to the administrative rings. I also have the pleasure of recognizing Mr. Jeff Raymond, who you saw highlighted in the video, longtime principal at Indian Town Middle School. Jeff, if you please stand and be recognized. He will be our new Director of Recruitment and Retention for the district. Jeff has given his heart and soul to the Indian Town community. You are beloved, and we know that you will be missed at the school, but we'll be mentoring and coaching the new principal that takes over at Indian Town, and we are extremely excited to have you here at the district and know that you will do a fantastic job helping us to recruit and retain the very best staff. So welcome aboard. Thank you. And a slight shift in position for her, but Mrs. Shannon Armstrong, who was the Director of Recruitment and Retention, will be moving over to the Director of Human Resources. So congratulations, Shannon. You have done a great job with process improvement and helping our team in payroll, working alongside of Anthony as a true team effort, Better Together, to make sure that some of our payroll issues and some of the human resources data input issues have been cleaned up and corrected, and for that, we are very happy to move you into that Director of Human Resources role so that you can continue the great work that you're doing. So thank you. Moving into some data sharing on staffing updates, I had the opportunity to pull some data for all of you and it was shared. As of October 9th, the Martin County School District is 98% instructionally staffed. We currently have 25 open instructional positions. 19 of those employees are awaiting certification and state processing. And we have hired 176 AFSMI and MCEA and non-bargaining employees since July 1st. I have the pleasure of sharing with the board and the public that Chancellor Sonny contacted all superintendents last week via the phone, had a wonderful conversation with her. She reviewed all instructional vacancies with each superintendent and she was pleased with the Martin County School District's progress as being one of the lowest in the state with the number of current instructional vacancies that we have. So my hat goes out to all of our principals as human capital managers to work hard to make sure that we have the very best teachers up in front of students. And I'm also excited at the work that Jeff is going to be able to bring to the table as former principal after this evening. And his efforts will be focused around our retention. So we've done recruitment efforts, but we want to retain our very best employees and Jeff's focus will be around that area. The best cut scores updates. In September, the Florida Department of Education submitted recommended cut scores to the legislator for review as required by state law. And the state board will be reviewing these recommendations for adoption tomorrow, October 18th. These cut scores proposed by the Florida Department of Ed are slightly higher than the recommendations that were submitted by the Reactor Panel, but within the standard error deviation of plus or minus four scale score points. And those proposed cut scores by the DOE represent a higher standard of proficiency across many standardized assessments. We have reviewed these as a leadership team and principals will be reviewing these as well. And training will be forthcoming and working with all of our principals and school sites to make sure that they firmly understand how these new cut scores will impact their school grade. But as you can see, the recommendations from the Reactor Panel and from the DOE are very closely aligned. There's only one or two point scale score deviation between the two. Same thing with math, as you see there. Algebra I is the largest jump from 396 to 400. So that will impact our students at the high school level and middle school levels that are taking algebra. But we, the team, is aware of that and have already begun the work with our principals in making sure that those students have the adequate tutoring that they need and assistance to make sure that they pass with the new cut score. The proposed cut scores will be applied to the 22-23 PM 3 results and used to calculate baseline grades. This is a shift from the original direction of reporting 2022-2023 baseline grades using just the FAST scale for PM 3. Once the new cut scores are adopted by the State Board of Education tomorrow, the Florida Department of Education will re-report the 22-23 PM 3 and the 23-24 PM 1 results using the new scale score. School and district leaders, as I said, have been getting trained and interpreting those results for planning purposes and proficiency attainment under the new cut scores. Once they are re-reported and the data is released, we'll be able to take a deeper dive into what that shows and what that says about the district. Proficiency will continue to be defined as achievement level of three or above. As we are all aware, it was a very heavy legislative session and this last go-around. And last week, the Florida Department of Education released a spreadsheet to school districts to use when tracking all of the responsibilities as a result of the 2023 legislation. This is something that school superintendents across the state had been asking the state for. And so I'm pleased that they were able to provide this for us because it is a huge tool to help school districts keep track of all the legislation that was passed to make sure that we are monitoring all of that new legislation. There was 123 pieces of legislation that are included on the tracker with various responsibilities that are delineated by school district staff. Some of those responsibilities include the review of local policy and/or school board action, changes to district documentation, including the many forms that we've had to redo, information to be disseminated to parents, information posted on our website, information to be tracked and submitted to the Florida Department of Ed, and tracking related to funding and tracking related to student instruction or advising. Staff will continue to use this tracker to guide their work and ensure the Martin County School District remains in compliance with all legislative and associated deliverables. And I'm proud to say that every Monday, as we meet as a leadership team, this is an area of focus where all of our assistant superintendents are working directly with their directors to make sure that all of these pieces of legislation are in place and moving forward as needed within the district. And last, but certainly not least, I had the opportunity to visit Warfield Elementary this morning for their instructional rigor walk. This is the highlight of my day, to be completely honest with you. Getting out to schools and to really be able to get into the meat of the work that we're doing that our instructional team and principals are working so hard to accomplish. The teachers, just the joy on their faces with these students at Warfield. The teachers were on fire and instruction was top-notch this morning. I don't think that there was a single member of the district team that wasn't thoroughly impressed with the progress that Warfield Elementary has made over the last two and a half to three years. Fifth grade, which we just recently moved to Warfield Elementary, was spot-on. The instruction was rigorous. The students were engaged and they are well on their way to seeking the improvement that I know that they are all set out to achieve. They're blowing up social media. I don't know if you have seen Warfield Elementary, but they are out there, they are loud, they are proud, and they are doing everything they can to hold on to that coveted spirit stick. So other schools, beware, a little friendly competition, I know that, but they're doing great things. And it was a great visit, so thank you.
Thank you, go Warriors. As an alumni of Warfield, it makes me proud. Okay, thank you very much for that. And when, just one. When you get the run of the PM data for last year and for this first PM, if you could share that with the board, I think it'll be interesting data that everyone would like to see kind of where everything falls.
I would love to, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, are there any other presentations? I think that's it for presentations. Are there any questions from the board about any of the other monthly reports, information-only reports? Okay, seeing none, we will move right on to Board Member Information Share, Ms. Roberts.
So I included for you all, the Children's Services Council-funded programs for the year 23-24. According to their strategic plan, they have funding priorities. It includes healthy children, strong nurturing families, safe, stable communities, success in school and life, broken down into two parts for early learning and youth development and academic support. But it goes through and it shows you what the total is, the $8.3 million of funding that's going back from the taxes that are paid to Children's Services Council. And as you may or may not know, requests for proposals are released every year. So it's kind of a rolling thing. So the one that we just finished up, where the safe, stable communities, the one that we're going into, or the ones that's starting up for this next year is early learning development, early learning and development. And next year's will be youth development and academic support. But this is the list of programs. So they have other things, you know, like flyers, et cetera. But these are ones that will actually give you the dollar amounts of what those pieces are. I just wanted to share that so you kind of would have an idea of what those were. Thanks.
Yes, thank you for sharing that. I know that that's something that the community supported with their vote and we are so appreciative of that. And it's, thank you for bringing that awareness to the public and how our tax dollars are being spent in a very great way impacting children. So thank you. All right, moving on, it's not quite time for public comment. I have some public comments. We'll go ahead and get started and then if anybody comes after, they can join us at the end. Okay, citizen input is vital to the improvement of our district. Most times, your remarks may be listened to without comment from the board members or superintendent. This does not mean they are heard with any less intensity or concern. Where appropriate, the superintendent and staff will investigate your comments and report back to you and the board with an answer. We thank you for taking the time and having the concern to make our district better. Your presentation to the board should not exceed three minutes. First up is Susanna Deutsch, followed by James Gamble.
I don't think this was meant for tiny people like me. Good afternoon, my name is Susanna Deutsch and I am the proud principal of The Pinewood Elementary School. And Warfield, we're coming for you. Thank you for the opportunity to share with your amazing school. The Pinewood Elementary was established in 1988. Our enrollment is currently 677 students. We serve a very dedicated, loyal community of families. Our Panthers are a diverse group of learners, 51% Hispanic, 35% white, 7% black, 4% multiracial, and 2% Asian. Of our 677 students, nearly half receive support services. 32% are English language learners and 16% exceptional student education. This past year, we searched high and low to hire highly qualified teachers to more closely mirror our school population. Today, we have one bilingual teacher, a minimum of one bilingual teacher in five of the sixth grade levels and our office and support staff are all shades of paucemness. The Pinewood has been diligently working to restore our school grade status. We, and by we, we mean every single community, school community member, have been aligning our professional development, resources, strategies, support, and family nights to create a highly engaging learning environment in which teachers are progressively becoming experts of the best standards and our students' academic abilities are growing exponentially. This is our eighth year as a model PBIS school. Our program is based on growth and mindset and includes earning pop prints at the individual and class level, which students can spend on activities such as mustache day and at the pop-up pop print store. This year, we opened a parent resource center for families, which has already increased parent participation. We provide tutoring for identified students in extracurricular activities such as kickball, cheerleading, STEM, histories and mysteries, and crafting club using math concepts, just to name a few. We were thrilled to have inspired the return of Odyssey of the Mind as the only Martin Elementary School to participate last year. Our volunteers are absolutely paucem. Last year, we earned the number one spot for PTA memberships and number two spot for most volunteer hours. Between the school PTA, the school and PTA, there are family events scheduled every month of the school year. In the next three years, we will work toward truly embodying the words "school of pausabilities" by branding ourselves as a school of communication. At Pinewood, our motto is "all in, all the time", because we understand that together we are better. Thank you.
Thank you.
At 4:30, you should have received an email with a presentation from The Pinewood Elementary.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, next up is James Gamble, followed by Blanche Wells.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Maine, and members of the Martin County community, good evening. My name is James Gamble and my wife MJ and I have recently moved to Stewart from Kansas. Last month, I addressed the board with the question, "Why?" Why have approximately 100 books been taken off of the library shelves in the Martin County School District? This evening, I will drill down a bit on this topic with a specific question in reference to the School Board Policy 2522. Policy 2522 is on the agenda for public review. My question is in reference to the following statement that was contained in the policy. Quote, "No challenge material may be removed solely because it presents ideas that may be unpopular or offensive to some," end quote. This statement had been previously written into the policy and this evening, it has been crossed out and recommended for deletion. With that said, why? Why is this statement being recommended for deletion? The mission of the Martin County School District is clear, to educate all students for success. And in Superintendent Maine's detailed 90-day plan, he states, quote, "As we embark on this critical journey guided by our quest to prepare our students for successful futures, I implore us to prioritize collaboration," end quote. With that said, I, for one, implore our school leaders to approach the challenges to books that are made by a few by prioritizing collaboration and involving the multiple stakeholders in these very important decisions. Please begin by not deleting a statement that aligns so well to the school district's mission. Again, quote, "No challenge material may be removed solely because it presents ideas that may be unpopular or offensive to some." Please make this an integral part of the School Board Policy 2522, which is under review for approval this evening. Thank you very much for your time and thank you for your service to our community.
Thank you. Blanche Wells, followed by Neil Colvin.
Hello to each of you, board members, thank you for your service, and also to Superintendent Maine and everyone who's come to these very, very important meetings. My name is Blanche Wells. My doctoral work was in national educational leadership with an emphasis on crisis management in public schools. And I've worked for, I'm also a licensed mental health counselor in Florida. And I worked for the school district for 25 years at both the high school and the elementary level as a counselor. In addition to that, after I retired, I worked for another five years as a school-based mental health therapist in two other elementary schools other than the one I had been in before. I say all of this so that I can back up with my own observation what this small district did. During those years, we were always great in football, but we also became a scholastic powerhouse. And we were producing at one point 17 national merit semifinalists, more than all of Palm Beach County high schools put together. At the same time, our Exceptional Student Education Program started the in-school mental health program, as one of the things that it did, in addition to how it was serving students with exceptional needs and it won national acclaim. The elementary school that I was at won a national, from Washington DC, Character Education Award because of its work in character education with the Character Counts Program. And you should know that it was this community which brought the need for character education to us, which is the reverse of what happens. And it was so noted by the people in Washington and one of the reasons we won that award. Also, the tremendous work of our teachers and involvement of the students. We used conscious discipline to teach trustworthiness, responsibility, respect, caring, fairness, and citizenship every day, not separate from the curriculum. It was right there. Very, very interesting. So, I'm here because the Florida Constitution says that every child, every child in the state of Florida should have a robust public education. So why are you banning books? Why are we, one of the leading counties in the state, to be banning books? What's happening there? Thank you for the compliance. I'm glad we're in such great compliance. But as Thomas More said, "Compliance is the death of creativity."
Thank you. Neil Colvin, followed by Maura Guadagno.
Good afternoon, my name's Neil Colvin. Instead of banning books, I'm here to propose putting one of these in each high school library. The title of the book is Devil in the Grove. The subtitle is Thurgood Marshall, The Groveland Boys, and the Dawn of a New America. Let me explain, it's a nonfiction, 2013 Pulitzer Prize-winning book about very horrible conditions in Lake County, Florida in 1949, 50-51. A lot of injustice. But don't judge too quickly here, because our current governor was also involved in some of this and you'll hear why. Just stand by to listen. Just stand by to listen. Arthur Gilbert King addressed the Martin County Bar Association last month. And by way of introduction, I was admitted to the Florida Bar in 1980 and the US Supreme Court admitted me in 1988. And before I went to law school, I was an Air Force officer for eight years, so that's just introduction. Gilbert King talked mainly of a revealed horribly wrong Florida in 1949. Four black men were accused of raping a white woman. Two were veterans, one was 16, and all in the hands of Willis McCall, a very brutal and frankly homicidal sheriff in a no justice for black men society. We also involve Thurgood Marshall. He was the attorney for the NAACP for these men after they were convicted of the rape and sentenced to death by electric chair. One 16-year-old fled before he was arrested. A posse of 1,000 people headed up by Sheriff McCall caught up with him and put 400 bullets at him, according to the coroner. Second trial, the US Supreme Court set aside the first convictions. Second trial came up and Governor Collins in 1955 pardoned the men and commuted their sentence to life. Lots of complexities here, but in the end, and this is why it's current, in the end, in 2019, the Florida Clemency Board headed by Governor DeSantis unanimously agreed to pardon all four men. And Governor DeSantis said, "70 years is a long time. That's the amount of time four young men have been wrongly written into Florida history for crimes they did not commit and punishments they did not deserve." In 2021, they were formally exonerated. So my proposal here is to put these books in the libraries. I see no reason why you shouldn't approve them, but that's my full take on it. I have three copies. To whom do I deliver these, Mr. George?
So Superintendent Maine, if you could reach out in whatever the, you know, with the process of adding books to our library, then go through that process.
My team will review it.
Thank you. Maura, followed by Robin Ide.
Good afternoon, all board members and everyone here today. My name is Maura Guadagno. I've been lived here for 25 years. I have two children. I'm a retired RN and both my children attended Martin County High School and got a great education. I want to thank all the hardworking teachers and everyone in the school system for all they do, because I know it's hard work with not the greatest pay, but they really have inspired me. We began today by saying the pledge of allegiance and stating our belief in liberty and justice for all. Is liberty and justice banning books that are about our history and about how things are good and things are bad? But we need to have that history so we learn from our mistakes. This is not liberty and justice when we're preventing hearing about slavery and hearing about racism. It's not liberty and justice. We're just not standing up to our beliefs. And that also includes LGBTQ communities, blacks, Spanish, Jews, and Muslims, that everyone in the United States deserves liberty and justice. We need books that all children can identify with, not just all white children. The book ban gets people of color, gives people of color more, less things to read. How can our children be prevented from reading books by Martin Luther King and many other famous people? We are calling true history CRT so that we can say that that's untrue, that black history is untrue. And it's not untrue. We're putting labels on things so that it's bad, you know? And that's not the way, that's not the way we should live. We should learn to identify with people and love all people, not restrict our education because that it's unheard of or it's, they think some, a small group of people think it's wrong. We need to love and teach our children to love and not to teach our children that gays are bad and that black people are bad and that because someone is a different sexual orientation, those are evil people. We can't, we can't live in the world this way. We need to love instead of hate despite, and we need to love people despite their diversity that we may not agree with. Books should never remind people, I'm sorry, books should never be banned because of one parent. Let each individual parent decide.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Robin, followed by Cindy Summers.
Hi, I am Robin Ide, I-D-E, and I live in Jensen Beach. I used to work in Washington DC, formerly from Virginia, worked in regulatory banking and securities enforcement law. I'm a proud woke. I don't believe in banning books, but I'm telling you, after January 11th, I mean, excuse me, September 11th and January 6th, there are the times that I've been really scared for our country. Recovering from the 9/11 events was slow, but gathering Americans, the honor we felt by flying our flags was enlightening. We were a country filled with pride and democracy was praised. I now live in a country divided by hate, racism, censorship, bullying, and no separation between church and state. I have attended more of these board meetings than I'd like to remember and listened to many public comments. I often wonder what planet everybody is coming from or if I just missed something. The mothers of liberty scare me. Our governor scares me. How did we get here? Knowledge to make the right and wrong decisions is being compromised by censorship. We have a conservative group deciding that certain books are no longer appropriate for school age or young adults. When do we stop using our children as an excuse to express the views not shared by all? I worry about my grandchildren, whether they're being indoctrinated or whether they'll have the right to make a choice. As the January 6th event has taught many of us, democracy is at a risk and it needs to be cared for in the real world. I bring with me a banned book, right here, Me, Earl, and the Dying Girl. I never heard of it before. It's a fabulous book, but it was removed because it was deemed to be offensive to women. I read it. I didn't find it offensive. It's a comedic book. It's a story about a student's experience to adjusting to high school and his challenges navigating through school. I just imagine my own child that. The audience is for high school and it won a Sundance Film Award. Just to wrap this up, as General Milley said in his retirement speech, "Today isn't not about us on stage. It's much larger than us. It's about democracy. It's about a republic. We don't take an oath to a country. We don't take an oath to a tribe. We don't take an oath to religion or an individual. We take the oath for the Constitution." Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy Summers, followed by Beth Smith.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Maine. My name is Cindy Summers. I am a resident of Martin County. Who suffers when books are banned? The students, who will be less empathetic, less tolerant, less able to think critically, less informed, ill-prepared to relate and to understand the world as it is, more likely to target and bully those who are different than themselves. The teachers, who will experience loss of respect, less ability to connect with students, a less enjoyable workplace, and less job security. Teachers who live in constant fear they will lose their teaching license or be convicted of a third-degree felony if one of their well-intentioned acts is found to violate any of the provisions of the recently passed and often vaguely worded legislation. The schools, who will experience a drop in national school ranking, fewer teachers and students, loss of business, confusion and fear about the new laws and how to implement The school board, whose abilities and actions have been severely constrained by new laws concerning book removal and oversight. A board that faces the real probability that their actions are unconstitutional under the First and 14th Amendment of the United States Constitution. Everyone suffers.
Beth Smith, followed by Sidney Thomas.
My name is Beth Smith and I'm a resident of Martin County. Just as my background, I've spent 44 years in education, everything from elementary through college level, counselor, teacher, administrator, district office personnel. So I've basically surfed through the whole school, the whole school system in different types of jobs. What I'm concerned about, and I read this to this week and it really fits, teachers are one of the few professions that they work before they come to work so that they can do their work and then they prepare during their planning period to finish the work and then they go home and they work some more. And so they spend an awful lot of time out of the school day just keeping up with the work and especially with all the new requirements and everything else that's put in place. When you talk to teachers, a lot of them will say, "Sometimes I feel like I'm spending more time raising other people's students than I am actually raising my own," because they're spending so much time trying to prepare and do the best that they can for their students. So teachers work hard. What I'm concerned about is though we might have 90%, 98% of our teaching staff filled, we still have several teachers that are working out of field. Now, I know I was a social studies teacher. If someone told me that I was going to teach physics, forget it. Or if I was to teach math, it wouldn't be a good subject either because I was a social studies major. So besides working, these teachers that are out of field are trying to play catch-up. They're building the bicycle while they're trying to ride it in order to keep up. And one of the other concerns I have that I've seen is that when teachers are forced to try to fit stuff in and get things done, they rely on resources such as teachers pay teachers. Well, it sounds like a great thing. Those are basically worksheets and worksheets do nothing but dumb kids down. They are low-level thinking materials and teachers use those to fill, to fill it so they've got something to plan, to use for their planning. So what I'm saying is, please, work hard to get these people in the right positions. Make sure that we have teachers that are equipped for the jobs and give them the support to remove unruly students so that they can teach a classroom and not their whole time is spent dealing with one or two children that really need more than what they can handle. Thank you.
Thank you. Sidney Thomas, followed by Victoria Depenthaller.
Good evening and thank you for this opportunity. This is on behalf of a teacher of Martin County School District. Dear Mr. Maine, when you laid out your vision for the Martin County School District, you indicated that you want it to be number one district in Florida and in the country. I commend you for that and wish the district well in this pursuit. When I was a student here many, many years ago, we were considered to be one of the best school districts in the state of Florida. Do you know how we got there? It was by letting our teachers use their expertise to teach and not by putting them constantly under microscope. It was by listening to our children and realizing what they needed, all of them. When you and any of the school board members come into our classrooms, please interact with your teachers and their students. When you come in and just stare, it not only makes a teacher nervous, but also affects our students negatively. You'll find that by actually interacting, you will really get to know your school body and will also come to realize what a passionate and devoted group of teachers you have. We want what is best for our students and we want a board that recognizes our dedication and supports this and our mission. I implore you to take the time to reach out to teachers independently and personally and in a safe space, away from the school administrations and away from interference from the board, to discuss the strife and frustration as well as the positives about what we are dealing with and feeling in and out of the classroom. The simple fact that I fear repercussions, should I read or sign this open letter personally, is evidence enough that this is warranted. I can guarantee you, I am not the only teacher who feels this way. It might behoove the district to reassess the unwritten retention policy of not holding back a child until third grade and rather consider teachers' opinions regarding kindergarten or first-grade retention if a child is not grasping basic concepts of those grades. Those are data that support that having a child repeat kindergarten or first grade is generally fine, but after a second grade, self-esteem is more effective. Children do not all develop at the same rate and early retention could go far to identify those children who really do need a year to truly be ready to learn. Thank you for your vision, Mr. Maine. It is most appreciated. I am compelled to point out that this district currently has board members who actively and publicly express opposition to our teachers' union, meaning by default, they are against our teachers. One of our board members speaks openly in public about how she prays for the teacher union to fail. Without our union teachers, we'd have no representation to protect our rights and protect us against arbitrary power exercised by heavy-handed administrators. Would you be okay if the same attempt at dismantling was inflicted on the police and firefighters' unions? The same board member also speaks at political rallies and broadcasts our MCSD School Board title at the same time. These board members have been elected on a nonpartisan ticket. It is abundantly clear which side of this member is on. As a teacher and citizen of Martin County, I believe it is not only improper but wrong for a school board member to openly represent our district at a political event. They're getting bolder in their actions and until measures are taken by fellow board members to stop, they'll never reach number one because we'll never be allowed to teach. We'll continue to be a joke and make national headlines.
Thank you. Victoria Depenthaller, followed by Hillary Pender.
Well, it's hard to follow that because that just sums it up, but good evening. My name is Victoria Depenthaller. I'm a longtime Martin County educator and former school board member. As educators and school board members, you have a moral and ethical obligation and responsibility to provide students with an effective teaching and learning environment that is physically and emotionally safe and we must teach and build respect for the worth, dignity, and equality of every individual. We must put our personal views aside when discussing topics that require the board to make decisions related to student safety, well-being, and education. You must meet every student where they are and keep every student safe because students cannot learn in an environment in which they do not feel safe. It is the duty of public servants to lead from a place that is in the best interest of all students. It is important for all students and staff to know that you value, support, and celebrate diversity and will do everything you can to provide a safe, nurturing, inclusive education environment. Young people must feel and believe that they belong and an affirmation by not only the school and district staff, but also those in leadership positions such as yours as a school board member is critical to their well-being and success. Our district must acknowledge that we live in a multicultural society and should be embracing the diversity of each student and employee, understanding that our similarities and differences including gender, race, ethnicity, socioeconomic background, linguistic differences, exceptional abilities, variations of talents and abilities, and special needs only strengthen us as a community. As adults, we are role models for our youth and we should be supporting students by encouraging them to value their own individuality while also learning to value the unique experiences and perspectives of others. With the conflict all around us in this world we are living in, this is more important now than ever. In order for our children, grandchildren, and future generations to experience safety, achieve success, and live a full life, a life full of happiness and opportunity, we should be teaching conflict resolution strategies and promoting peace and acceptance of others. Your obligation as board members is to ensure the safety of students, which includes physical and emotional safety, and provide a high-quality education that allows students the opportunity to not only see themselves in books, but also to read books that help to provide insight into similarities and differences in others, promoting acceptance. Students should be taught the factual history of our country and the world around them so they understand that true evil exists and what it takes to protect our democracy. Thank you.
Thank you. Hillary Pender, followed by Maddie Williams.
Good evening, board members and Superintendent Good evening, board members and Superintendent Maine. My name's Hillary Pender, I'm a social studies teacher out at South Fork High School, and I am coming here to speak with you this evening, covered all of the other topics I wanted to talk about, but, so I'm coming to talk to you guys about our principal, Dr. Aiken. It has been thirty-two school days. We've been in school for thirty-two days, and we have not had a principal. Our acting interim principal is Ms. Jamie Thompson, and she has done an amazing job doing her job as well as our principal's job, but that is not a long-term plan. So I have, I've been a teacher at South Fork, this is my eighth year as a teacher, it's not my first time, or sorry, it's not my first career, I've had a number of different supervisors and bosses, people above me, all of that kind of stuff. So, I wanted to specifically come and speak to you guys, because I've had three different principals at South Fork, and Dr. Aiken being the last has, is by far the best, sorry, four, including as a student, as I attended South Fork as well and graduated at the Martin County School System. At South Fork, in the last two years, the environment and the climate have completely changed. I watched over fifty of my coworkers leave in the five years that our previous principal was there. Some of it was because of the pandemic and outcomes in education, but majority left for other teaching jobs in other districts, and it was because we, our grievances and our complaints went unacknowledged. Dr. Aiken was promoted to South Fork after doing an amazing job at Anderson amongst other, other schools in our district. He is by far the best supervisor I've ever had in this field and in any other. He took the time to learn about South Fork, learn what mattered to us, what we needed, and has asked us as a, as a faculty to generate a plan for our future, our, our five-year plan. We have been having, as, as a team, we have been meeting, had been meeting, every single week. We had ten adults who gave up three hours of their afternoon every single week to work on this. That's how committed we were to his goal and what he wanted for us, and it's because it was also what we wanted. A few weeks ago, when he was first pulled from our school, we, we showed up, teachers arrived and stood outside the school board district, and I just want to ask you, when have you ever seen teachers show up for a principal? I know our investigation's over, so I ask that a decision be made, and we be notified.
Maddie Williams, followed by Regina Wood.
Good afternoon, Chair Powers, distinguished members of the Board and Superintendent Maine. I'm Lana Barrows, the Director of Innovation and Choice. I'm here with Maddie Williams, she serves on the Treasure Coast Builders Association, and we work very often together, and she has a special proclamation to share.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm here in a very positive light to say thank you to the school board and to all the teachers and principals in the Martin County school systems. We were fortunate to receive a proclamation from the Martin County Board of County Commissioners, as well as Governor DeSantis, declaring Careers in Construction Month for the month of October. Why is this important? Because Careers in Construction, it's an annual observance designated to increase public awareness and appreciation for construction craft professionals and the entire construction workforce. During the month, employers, trade associations like myself, the schools, and other training facilities are encouraged to conduct job fairs, panel discussions, and local community events to inform students and young adults about the vast employment opportunities in the trades. The Builders Association, as well as our Skill Trades Committee, among many other partners, we have established student memberships, mentoring programs, ready-to-work boot camps, where we also partner with the Marine Industries and the Manufacturers Association. We've done many job fairs, and we also provide scholarships for those that want to continue their education and then come back and still work in the construction industry. We have many, many opportunities to support all of these programs, and we hope that you will support our programs by volunteering to mentor in our schools, and to recognize all the hard work that Ms. Barrows does for us, and she's a vital part of our initiatives, and she's the best partner I have. So, thank you so much.
Very sweet, DeSantis.
Thank you.
We have a lot to celebrate, so thank you for teaming with us. Careers in Construction Month.
Yay!
Thank you, Maddie.
Okay, Regina Wood, followed by Linda Brown.
Hello, good afternoon, good evening. Thank you for letting us talk during this public service time. My name is Regina Wood, and I have lived in Martin County since nineteen seventy-seven. I am a retired social worker and did all of my work here in Martin County and places like hospice and the hospital, and am very much in love with this community. I, seventy, if you had told me that it's seventy-one years old, I'd be coming to school board meetings, I would say, you know, no, that, that wouldn't happen, because frankly, I didn't go to them when I was younger. And shame on me for that. However, I also felt there wasn't a need to. There was a lot of trust in the school board, in the school district, back in the day, not too far, you know, a few years ago. There was a lot of trust, and, and I believed, people would call me up from, from out of state, and they'd say, "Aren't those schools bad down there in Florida?" You know, and I'd say, "No." I'd say, "We live in Martin County. We got the best schools in the state." You know, and I believed that. I believed that, I knew people in the school district, and, and there was that trust, there was no need to, you know, get all excited about it. Not that everything was perfect, but, but there was that trust. Right now, I'm very concerned, as so many people are, about the future of, of public education in Martin County and in the state. The things that are coming down from Tallahassee, I believe, I don't know anybody, too many people that, that agree with it, but I think there are a lot of people that don't. I think there are a lot of people that are not in, in, you know, in line with what's happening, and I think that, that people need to hear that. And I think that it is imperative that, that the school board and the school district not just go, you know, for, for children, the children and the parents are, that's great, but also the community. I mean, there is, you need to be concerned about the whole community, about being transparent, about explaining to taxpayers like myself and, and people within the community what's going on and why it's going on, and, and let us know that you're being open about that. And, and with that in mind, with the policy coming up for, for the book removals, I think that, that it is not a big deal to ask the school board to include in that policy, a, you know, where people can challenge the removed books, that that should be in there, that people, that books, I'm concerned that books, that if we don't have that, and everything's being done from, you know, get, the get-go, that there are going to be books that, that people would want to be in the schools that are, that, you know, they're just never going to come up. So I also think that people, there should be, part of that policy should be, that people able, are able to come to the school and say, "Hey, these were on, I don't know, some great list, and I think they should be added to the schools." So I don't think, I, I think that that is a step, like I said, I think that trust is really important, and I think that would be a step in the right direction. Thank you.
Linda Brown, followed by Annette Lindell.
Good evening, school board members, Superintendent Maine, and all those attending this meeting. As a resident of Martin County, I come to you as a former elementary school teacher, and I wanted to share with you some ideas that I was part of a discussion group with the League of Women Voters in Florida. The most important that came up is that children should learn without censorship. Schools are a source of equality and truth, and we take away from the quality of public education when we try to censor what children have available to them in school libraries. Professionals, that would be teachers, librarians, are best equipped to make decisions about what books deserve to be on the school board shelf, uh, school, bookshelves, sorry. Of course, parents should have a say in what their child has access to, but not in what all children in a school district have access to. I fear that preferential treatment is being given to what a small number of parents want removed from the shelves at the expense of what the majority of parents want. I also worry that currently, a book can be removed, but there is no mechanism for putting it back on the shelf. I urge you to listen to all parents in the district and not cower in the face of this attack on freedom to read. Thank you.
Annette Lindell.
Hello, and good afternoon. Thank you for this opportunity to speak, and I want to thank all the school teachers for all of their hard work and, and dedication, and to the school board that I know works hard to make our schools all they can be. I want to continue on the frame that Linda talked about. I grew up in Florida in the fifties, tells you how old I am, I am a product of the public school system, as are my children and my grandchildren here in Florida. We've all grown up to be productive, law-abiding citizens, and were able to read whatever was available in the libraries at school and everywhere else, and at home. As a parent, I never had a problem communicating with the teachers or with the school, it was always transparent. If a topic came up that I was not comfortable with, or a book that they were reading, I never had a problem contacting the school and/or the teacher and/or the principal, and easy, easy to make a resolution, it was never an issue. Therefore, I'd like to know why we needed HB, House Bill 1467, which has made this a law. Do we now not have a remedy? Who speaks for us? Who hears my voice when I want to say, "Wait a minute, I, I want to unchallenge the book that you banned." Ladies and gentlemen, there are a hundred and sixty-one thousand residents of Martin County, eighteen thousand five hundred and forty-two students in our public schools, as you will know. It is appalling and astonishing that a handful of people can actually determine what sits in our school libraries. It's really unconscionable, it's unconscionable, and very scary for the future, not only of our public school system, but for the country. We need a remedy to be able to come and talk about, why are you banning this book? And please hear our voices. Thanks very much, appreciate it.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. We're going to take a quick break, and we will be right back to continue our meeting.
Okay, we are going to resume our meeting. All right, we are going to go to the action-only item, and we will take item 3.05, Mr. DiTrellisi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Couple of things, I just wanted to thank Dr. Miller and Superintendent Maine and staff for working on this as diligently, including our, our facility staff, you guys have done a great job, and anybody else who's been involved with the SPAM organization, SPAM Robotics coming into this facility on the other side of that wall. But I did have some questions regarding the collaborative agreement. Thank you, Dr. Miller, for sending it off to me. I appreciate it. I was able to speak to, to Mr. Putt from the organization and about it, and I know Mr. James sent a letter in, so, but I just did have a couple of comments, and I don't know who wants to take those comments or questions, but, the 501(c)(3) status may take a little while for them to obtain. So I'm curious about the insurance regarding, I guess they have a certain kind of insurance if they have a 501(c)(3) status, and currently, they're using 4H insurance. I'm wondering if we have any problem as a board, or with staff, or our attorney, allowing them to continue to use that until their 501(c)(3) status comes in and not delay them? And we talked originally about October 1st, occup, you know, occupying the building, and now we're talking possibly December. It would be nice to be able to get them in a little sooner, and if we can help them in that, in that fashion, that would be great. I do, regarding insurance, I have a couple of other questions. There's a whole bunch of things about liability insurance and commercial general liability. I'm just curious where this information came from. Is somebody telling us they need a commercial policy? I'm wondering, they're a not-for-profit organization, they're not a business, they're a student group that competes like a football team, so, some of this insurance, $2 million general aggregate, a million dollars each occurrence, now I know general liability insurance is generally inexpensive, but, but I don't know with some, what some of these CG 0001 is, an additional insured under CGL, an ISO additional endorsement, I don't know if that'll add to the, the expenses for them, but also, as you go down, some of the other coverages, a million dollars combined, single limit for business automobile liability, I, I don't think they have any, any automobiles in the organization except for their own boards, individual vehicles that belong to them, and I hate to see this kind of muddy up the water, so, the insurance is a big thing that we need to make sure that we can, those items, if we can take a look at them and see if there's something, some changes that can be made there. Item I, which was flooring, I'm trying to find it now. It wasn't here. I think it's in the beginning. HI, SPAM encourage, uh, da, 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 hang on. Oh, so item I, yes, GI, G1, I'm sorry. SPAM will be responsible for flooring, painting, and overall upkeep of the interior of the space. Additional modifications of space shall be requested and approved by the school district prior to taking place. This may be a big item for them, and the floor in there is not totally level, and I just feel like maybe some sort of an obligation in board members, I don't know if you feel the same way or different, but, like, maybe we should provide them a flat floor, especially if we're going to allow them to put a, a facility in there to actually test and, and compete with robots on a local level. If we can do something for the floor to make sure it's level, and I don't know what that is, but maybe we can get our vendors that work with us to maybe help contribute to some of this, or maybe it'd be a partnership between SPAM and us and some of our vendors, it might be an epoxy floor, it may not be, may just be a leveling compound or something, but I think that would probably go a long way into allowing them to get their equipment in there, because you don't want to bring equipment in, and now they're talking December 1st, and maybe later, if this, I know how the wheels of government work, so, I think that's something I'd like to, us to, to consider and talk about. And the term of the agreement is a year and a half, and I, I don't want them to have the idea that, you know, we're going short-term, and, and my business, I, I give one-and-a-half-year leases to my new tenants, so, I'm not against it, I just want them to go in this wide-open and say, "Hey, listen, you know, we're looking for a long-term partnership with you all, and we're just going to start it off here to see how things go and work it out, and we can move forward to longer-term leases, you know, after the first year and a half." That way, the honeymoon's over, and we can get on to business as usual, so. Those are my comments that I have, and if anybody wants to talk about them, I'm here.
Ms. Roberts.
Thank you. So I had a couple of comments. When I read this, I understand that the insurance part, that's our normal insurance that we require from people that were doing these, but it appeared to me that we were somewhat conflicted as to whether this was a partnership, or whether, as to what this looked like. So when I look on page one, 1E talks about, "They will provide documentation of 501(c)(3) status," which we know that takes some time to do, "and Level 2 background clearance for all volunteers and SPAM staff unless they're Martin County School District employees." So, okay, I can understand that, that makes it like they're doing business with, like they're part of us, you know, because other people, when you're actually just renting or doing something, you don't need to do that Level 2, etc., you're getting a facility and doing that. So I thought that that was kind of contradicting the other piece for the insurance. I mean, I think that if we're requiring your stepped-up insurance like you're an outside entity, then at the same time, requiring the Level 2 background screening is kind of- of, and I do think they should have the Level 2 background screening. I mean, the direction that I would lean is that they should have the Level 2 background screening, but maybe those insurance requirements need to be something different. The piece I was having a difficulty with with the insurance clause was that we need to receive their insurance, their certificate of insurance, 30 days prior to their start of using the facility. And if their insurance cost is contingent on them getting their organization cost, and then if they don't get that, I mean, we're in the middle of October now, the game reveal is the first weekend in January, which means that in order for them to be able to use the facility, say, starting in January, which you would hope that they would be able to be set up before then, then you back Christmas into it. So now you've got ourselves to the middle of December, which means by the middle of November, they've got to hope that everything falls out, and they have all their ducks in a row in order to be able to do something there. And then the other piece I had was, I thought that the term of the agreement in effect through June 30th of 2025, if you want to say it June 30th of 2025, I think that's fine, but I think they should have some right to renew, or some right to, you know, as long as they aren't in any violation, that, you know, that, you know, for the next 10 years, 15 years, or something, you know, I mean, just something so that they have some guarantee. I don't really have a problem with their floor, because I think that they've indicated that, you know, the painting on the inside and the floor, they were willing to take care of those inside pieces. But I kind of feel like, if you told me, I can use your space, but I got to do the painting, and I got to take care of my floors, but my lease is only, or my agreement is only good until June of 2025, that gets me two seasons. It gets me '24 and '25, and I would be looking at whether this is really something that I really want to do. And I think the last thing was looking in automobile liability, when it talks about the insurance is required as notice herein if your business owns, leases, or rents vehicles. Well, we know that when they go to, when they don't use a bus, and they go to Houston, that they're renting vans to do that. So now we're requiring, and I don't think those vans are being rented under the name of SPAM Team 180. I think it's, if Marcia's the parent that's going to be driving the van, she's the one renting the vehicle, you know? So I mean, I think that it's going to be problematic, you know? I mean, if I have a business, and I, there's a whole different realm if I have a business and I'm renting a vehicle in the name of the business, or if I'm renting the vehicle as an individual. But I want this agreement to move forward, and I want to do something. I just think that it's, whether it's that we go ahead and accept it, and we come back with some modifications, or however, but I mean, I just think that those are, and I look to my fellow board members to see what they think.
Any other comments from the board?
Mike, did they come to you about the floor?
They did not come to me specifically about the floor at all, but we have had conversations about it. I guess when they inspected the facility, I guess that part of the store is where they stored, where they put the equipment to hold the reels, for the paper reels, and it's, there's these concrete pads that are elevated, and they're different level than the rest of the floor. So, and I don't know if they can perform on an epoxy floor, because that would obviously be the easiest way, go in there and epoxy the playing field area, and make sure it's level, because it's the easiest way to level it. But I don't know if their machines can perform on an epoxy floor. They may need better concrete to perform, so... But they did not come to me specifically about it, but that was a concern of some of their members.
Ms. Roberts?
I can answer a little bit of that. I know that when they play on a field, the field itself is usually a built floor. I mean, it's a floor, you know, it's a platform floor that they put in there.
Like a wood?
Like something that they put in that has all the pieces that they need. I mean, that's the competition field, and I know that most of the teams, that's what they, they put down their own flooring in order to be able to operate their robots. But I mean, I, you know, if that helps any.
I think it would be a good idea to get a price and see what we're talking about before we commit one way or the other, which I don't have a problem with, but I think we should get some prices, and also extend it to three years, because I think three years is more palatable. You put in a floor, you do all this work, and then by the time you're done doing all your work, you have six months left, or whatever it is. So I would just recommend three years if the board were willing to do that.
Ms. Roberts?
And I think that would be three seasons, and considering how long they've been around, I would like to see some renewal put in there, where as long as they're not in any violation or something. So even if the initial period was three years, but, you know, because they could walk away anytime they wanted, since there isn't a whole lot going back and forth. But I think it would give them some assurances and get them to feel like, you know, if you could renew, you know, five options to renew at three years each, or something, so at least they can kind of look at that and add that up in their head and see, you know, it looks like they're willing to have us for 18 years, as long as we don't do something really bad. Because I think that would be a, you know, I mean, because we're not here that long, you know? I mean, and I think it kind of, it gives them some security as to what they're doing, so that it's kind of like, it is a commitment, it is something that's working for all of our kids, that kind of.
Right, and there is a termination clause in the, that you can get, the school district, we can mutually agree to, or not even mutually agree, if they're not upholding, we can get out of the contract before. So it doesn't tie anyone's hands in the future. I agree, I think it should be a minimum of three years, pretty standard with first right to renew. I think the insurance things, we're not going to, we're not going to be able to work all that out here tonight, that we're going to have to have the attorneys and our risk management people look at that and figure this out. So what's the pleasure of the board on moving forward? We can try to bring this back at a special meeting at our November workshop.
Madam Chair, if I can talk about the 501(c)(3). So to apply to become under the IRS a 501(c)(3) would mean that they've created a Florida nonprofit corporation. So because I have another client who is seeking 501(c)(3), right now, the IRS is very backed up in processing 501(c)(3) applications. So when I view the language, what they would be supplying the district and the board would be proof of their Florida nonprofit corporate status, and a copy of their application, because they're going to be on hold, where there's nothing they can do about it for a period of time before they get a response from the IRS.
So I think there's going to have to be some sort of provision during the waiting, that waiting period, because we can't, obviously, if they don't have it, they can't produce it, and we don't want them lingering for a year.
Well, and I think the other problem is, so even if in order to move forward, here's my Florida not-for-profit corporation filing, and here's a copy of my application, but then that ties right back to the insurance piece. So if I'm not a 501(c)(3), the ability for me to get insurance, liability insurance is, becomes really expensive under that model, as opposed to if I'm walking in with a 501(c)(3). You know, I mean, I think it's a, so that piece is all fine. I mean, as far as moving forward with this, I think if we change the language on the page 1E, where it's the Florida not-for-profit and a 501(c)(3) application, and the Level 2 background checks, if we change that, and then say that we need to come back with the term of agreement and the insurance clause piece. So we have staff work on those two pieces, meaning that the term of agreement needs to be the three years with some kind of right to renew, and then the insurance piece kind of takes care of all the other issues, whether it's the 30 days prior to occupancy issue, whether it's how you lease, whether it's what the limits are, you know, those pieces I think can all be handled inside that paragraph.
Well, and I think it needs to be determined who is going to have to have a Level 2 background screen. Every single person, every volunteer for this organization?
They may do that now. I'm trying to get an answer, but they may already have Level 2 backgrounds. But I'm not totally sure.
A lot of those volunteers are parents, so I don't think you've got all these parents running out getting a Level 2 background screen.
Well, and I know when we first started talking about this, and I know there are some issues with first and how SPAM is, but, you know, we had originally talked about making them like a club, possibly, of our school districts, so they're kind of under our umbrella. We had also talked about making them the equivalent of like a sports team, the same as a football team or basketball team. So again, they would fall under our umbrella. I would like to explore that, to make sure that we're doing, we're going down the right path, not have them jump through hoops to create a 501(c)(3) when we could be doing this internally as a club or a sports team. Is my opinion.
They said they use carpets, so it's not complete leveling the whole floor, just the areas where they'll be competing or doing their testing, because they compete on carpet, according to them.
So we just need to get some of that stuff you pour on the floor?
Pour leveling, basically, that's what it is, sure. So it's not that whole, you know, 3,000-square-foot building area, it could be maybe 10% of it, or 25% of it, or something.
How long would it take us to put that club into play?
Well, apparently, the club process doesn't take very long. They apply individually, depending on where the club is, it's pretty quick.
Right, and I think, depending on the direction of the board, I mean, I've got all of this information down. I think we need to allow staff the opportunity to have some conversations and move forward with, I hear the board in saying path, the quickest path, that's also going to protect the district and put us in a position where we're able to get them in that building as quickly as possible, and the insurance piece too. So I'd like to be able to bring our staff back together now that we have direction, and be able to bring that back as quickly as possible.
And if we look at our calendar, maybe we can find a time to, once we get this quickly, you know? We want it to be thorough, but obviously, time is important right now with the holidays coming. We could hold a special meeting for this item.
And even if you put it in with the work in November's workshop?
At the latest, it would be November.
Yeah. But I mean, I think that the big piece of it, the hard part of it is, you know, realizing that November's our very next workshop and meeting, and that would be when they would have to hand us something within the 30 days to give us some insurance thing, which is kind of, I think that's unrealistic. I mean, I just think that's, and I think it's making, it's forcing somebody to go out and buy a whole bunch of insurance that they might not need to buy, you know, if we did them as a club, or if they were a 501(c)(3), or if all these other things. I mean, I think it's a...
Chair Powers, if I can, Don Calderon can speak to the insurance piece and clubs.
Hi, good afternoon. Don Calderon, Director of Risk Management and Employee Benefits. Just want to point out a couple of things. I've been working with Dr. Miller on this collaboration, Mr. Dieter Lisi. The insurance requirements that are listed there are the standard insurance requirements that we have in all of our agreements that we do business with, with different vendors and different outside organizations. Looking at the email that was sent, it appears that they are able to acquire the insurance, but at maybe a higher premium rate until they get that 501(c)(3) status. What we have done in the past, when we've worked with different organizations, is as long as they are supplying the district with the required insurance limits, and let's say on December 12th, they get that status, they can go out and get a more affordable policy with that tax-rem status, and then just have a different policy, different premium, and then just supply us with the additional dates for that policy. So I understand it's the board's pleasure to get them in here as quickly as possible. I think we all want that. But I think that probably the best way is for them just to acquire the insurance that they need with the limits provided, and then, once they get that 501(c)(3) status, they can go back to underwriting, show them the status, and they'll probably, more than likely, get a lower premium on their behalf, and they can just update us with the current policy.
Roberts?
So I can appreciate that, but I go back to, so when the elementary schools had Lego League teams that were through the Education Foundation's generosity to have those kits, et cetera, those individual teams that were coming from, whether it was the Anderson Stallions, or whatever it was, those teams were not being required to run out and buy insurance in order to be able to do things in their school, to compete in their school, to go to competitions, et cetera. They weren't being required to run out and be an entity, and buy insurance, and do all these other things. So I'm kind of, you know, I think we need to decide, and quite frankly, I look at them, I mean, I want to claim them. I want them to be part of us. I want them to be the Martin County School District First Robotic Team. I don't want them to be their own entity that's renting space from us and has an agreement, even if they're renting for free, I mean, because we have agreements where people use things for free. But I am more interested in claiming them and saying that this is the Martin County team, in the same way that, yes, they have homeschooled students, yes, they have charter school students, but so do everything else that is out there too. So it's kind of like, but as they get their glory, and as they get their trophies, and as they get to march in the Macy's Day Parade, et cetera, et cetera, I would like to be part of that ownership. I mean, I think that's something that puts us in a position where it's like it's us. And I think even though we're saying, you know, I mean, this is the standard language. This is the standard language if you're tykes and teens, this is the standard language if you're doing business with us, et cetera. This is the standard language, but those incidents of standard language is not the language that we use when they belong to us.
Correct, and that's, you're 100% right. So when they belong to us, they're, they are organized, supervised, and facilitated by a school district employee, whether they're getting a stipend, or they're within the scope and duties of their job, and that's really the main difference between a school district, school-sponsored, club, activity event, and those that are outside.
Sure, and I think that part of the issue with the team in the past has been whether it was Mr. Soviara, who was at Jensen Beach High School, and then it moves to a different teacher that's down in South Fork, and then it's moving. So you needed to find a teacher, like they were not running around, but every year, it was a requirement, let's find a teacher so we can use the property at South Fork, so we can do all these other kind of things. Quite frankly, I think that if it's going to be ours, and if it's a multi-school thing, instead of picking a teacher at South Fork, they're picking, I mean, I think maybe it should be the science coordinator, maybe it should be the math coordinator, who's the district person, but they're the liaison, and they're the representatives, so that it's a multi-school kind of thing, but they're the ones who are responsible. It doesn't mean that that person needs to go there and be there, and, you know, like attend every thing, but it's there, they would become, in my simple mind, they would become the liaison, and kind of like the corral person to make sure that it's...
Club sponsor.
The club sponsor. I mean, it's, you know, I mean, I think that's a workable solution to be able to do that. So, and I'm not trying to point a finger at anybody and say, that's the person who can do it. I think the superintendent is able, to be able to find somebody and say, this is the person, if that's the direction we want to go, that this is the person we want to designate as a sponsor. So it doesn't need to be a school teacher who may retire, may move, may change schools, may, you know, move from this school to that school, may change positions.
Correct, it could be any district employee, doesn't necessarily have to be a teacher. Correct.
I would support that.
Madam Chair?
Yes?
So originally, when we started talking, we talked about it being like a partnership between the two organizations. They're very proud of their organization, they've been around a long time, they're extremely successful, and I think they've, you know, it's their child. It's not only their children, but this team is their child, and I don't know that they're ready to walk away from it. Not walk away from it, not walk away from it, but...
We're not ready to adopt it like that.
Okay, so, well, Lee was saying, it's like one of our programs. I think eventually we could get there. I don't think we're there right at this moment. We need to get them in-house, we need to get them working on it, and then see if they have a feeling towards that. I agree, it needs to be collaboration between the both organizations. How far... that. I, I agree, it needs to be a collaboration between the both organizations. How far we go with it at some point in time will be, you know, the $3 million question.
Well, I want to be, I want them the, the same. I want them to be part of our school district. All the, most of the kids go to our schools. But you can't have it both ways because we serve many not-for-profits in our community that would love to have a deal like this. And they are providing something for our students 100%. I want that to be part of. I would like them to have a class specifically on robotics in our schools. I mean, I, they're that good and they're doing such great work. I would like it to become a credit. They earn a credit for doing this. Or, but we can't have it, we have to, we're walking a fine line because we have a lot of not-for-profits that would, again, like to use our facilities for free, would like to have additional space. So we, somehow we've got to work this out because they are our students. And I want to, I want to, I want them to be part of our district. I want them to be part of who we are and the brand that Ms. Mr. Maine is building for our school district. This is a really key part of that. It is hugely successful and the kids love it and it's creating engineers. And that's just my opinion. I would like them to be a club. I don't know that that necessarily means that they have to give up anything.
Yeah, I don't think it does.
Yeah, I don't think that that means we have to micromanage it. This is a wise investment, I feel like, for both parties, long-term. And if we can come to an agreement where they can be under us and part of us, that doesn't mean we have to go in and tell them, this is how you're going to do it now because you're on our turf. You know, we can let them do their thing while they're using our facility and be a part of us, and we can support them long-term.
Okay. I did receive a word from them about their insurance. It's through University of Florida and the 4H, and it's a million dollar general liability, $100,000 abuse based on our requirements. So that, that insurance they have, they should have their, their 501(c)(3) status, they're hoping by December. Yeah, they're hoping to get that insurance by December, which, their status, which they don't mind going for, because that insurance will probably be less money for them. So once they have that 501(c)(3) status, so that's fine. And they did have an estimate of $20,000 to $25,000 to clean, clean and paint and to level and carpet the floor. So... Because I don't believe the whole room needs to be carpeted. I just think it's that plating area. So, that's all I have.
So, Mr. Maine?
Yes, ma'am.
You're gonna come back to us? I, we kind of have to have this ironed out by November when we meet again. So I think it's going to be really important that you communicate with individual board members to let them know where we are and what the options are. And then we'll be prepared to make that very, very final decision at our November workshop or after our November workshop.
Will do. Yes, thank you.
Are you guys all good with that?
It's going to wait till November workshop and special meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
For the final, to come back, work out the insurance, work out the 501(c)(3), club, no club, how we're going to move forward with that. I just think there's too many unanswered questions to, to vote on this tonight. Okay, so we will take no action on item 3.05. Item 3.06, Ms. Roberts?
3.06, oh.
3.06 and 3.07 are the two attorney's agreements. I would like to thank Tyson for, this is a two-year-old agreement, but he's going from $262.50 an hour to $285 because Mr. Waters wants an 8.6% increase after two years. Mr. George's contract is looking to go from $262.50 to $300, which is a 14.29% increase. So I was just, I know that Tyson is here. I didn't know whether you wanted to say anything about your increase or...
Good evening. No, I'm just here for any questions that you may have, and it's been a pleasure working with you. And I have this unique position where I'm Tony's backup, but also help you with real estate and land use area. So I have a kind of a niche here, but I'm happy doing it. And I enjoy working with all of you. And again, I'm here for any questions and look forward to, look forward to a long relationship.
14.3?
And what's your question, Mrs. Roberts?
So my question is, so did you need to go to 300 or can you go to the 285? I mean, I know the two of you both had your rates at the same before.
Yes. And I will tell you the process by which I tried to figure out my rate. First, I talked to Sniffin and Spellman to get their perspective. I also, I have consistently, which the original basis that Mr. Waters and I were both on was 75% of my normal billing rate. So the 300 an hour is 75% of my normal billing rate. As I do my work, there are times when I sit here and have nothing to do and I'm billing. And then there's times where there's issues that I am addressing on behalf of the board where I am very much earning my billing rate. So I struggle in trying to come up with the amount. Ultimately, I did it at 75% of what is my average hourly billing rate, which in two years and with inflation has increased by the amount you referenced.
Thank you.
And I also checked in with Mr. Waters when I saw his rate. So I think both of us, and especially me, was prepared for your questions tonight.
And I will, our rates have increased over the past two years for a variety of reasons, both as kind of experience and workload grows, as well as inflation and everything else. And I, I do, I'm in a bit of a, as previously said, I'm in a bit of a unique situation than, than Mr. George, because when you call me, it's because you need something. And so I know, you know, it's actually work as opposed to, you know, kind of, most of the time sitting here and waiting. So I, I try to, to, to be reasonable with my increase, more so because it's a targeted work. And, and again, it's, it's certainly a reduction from my normal rate. And I, I didn't take the time to do the percentage, so I don't know what it is. But, you know, things have changed over the past two years. Workload and work expectations have changed as well.
That's all my questions. Okay?
I have some questions. I would like to have a discussion about getting someone in-house to serve for the board and the district. We're spending a lot of money on a lot of different items. Legislation is increasing, questions come up. It would be really nice to just walk down the hall and speak to an attorney instead of calling an attorney and then looking at what that half an hour or 45-minute conversation costs the district. And I do myself cringe when I see it because it's really expensive. And I think Mr. Morrison was going to supply us with a breakdown of the costs that we're incurring over the course of the last year. And it's, every year it's more than the year before. And I know it's probably an unpopular sentiment, but I just want to put it out there that we entertain an in-house attorney to serve both the district and the board as we have an appointed superintendent. We're no longer with an elected superintendent. And if we need an attorney, or the superintendent needs an attorney for something other than what's going on in the district and with the school board, he can find someone to do that for him. Thank you.
I'm Chair. So years ago, the district had an in-house attorney. And one of the problems is, is there's such specialty involved in education law that, plus other things that we do require so many different types of legal expertise. And you're not going to get around the cost of that, that legal expertise. And we've had this discussion for years. I mean, I'm sitting here 11 years, and we've had this discussion probably every two or three years. We had an in-house attorney that did labor, but that was pretty much, labor was her issue. But whenever we had any litigation, you have to have a different litigator. Whenever we had any business dealings that, that arose with legal issues, we had to have a, a business type attorney that could do those other issues. You also have to have a, a, an attorney as that, that handles us on employee matters. What do they call those?
Yeah, and we also, labor.
Yeah, but yeah, they, they, they represent us when charges are brought against a, an employee or a former employee in those type of cases. It just, I, I don't know. When, when we talked about bringing on this law firm, we talked about different expertise in their firm that actually keeps us from having to go out and do an RFP and do all these other things to get 15 law firms involved in our organization versus our labor attorney, our labor attorneys and our, our board attorney. And there's, there's obviously this, the board attorney is one, and then the business attorney is another attorney that you're going to need also. And then you need different levels of expertise from different people in those organizations or other organizations to represent the board in so many different avenues. So we've always, for the longest, for as long as I'm, almost as long as I'm here, I think when our staff attorney left, we, we decided to take this route. It's actually worked very well for us because of their, their diversity in their organization. So for the most part.
Ms. Roberts?
So yes, I, I remember that, Mike, that we've gone, every so often, we've gone out to look. And, and I'm willing to do that again, to go out and look and see what that would look like, just to see what the landscape looks like out there. That being said, I mean, I know you have other practice stuff anyway. But I would like to, I do believe there is high value though, in a land use attorney that's local, that understands and knows all the players. Because I do think that when, if, if you did find an attorney, so if we sent Renee out with her flashlight to go out and try to find somebody who could do school law, et cetera, I don't think you're going to find somebody who can do land use easements and all those pieces in that person. I mean, I think that that, especially in Martin County, navigating those waters, navigating the piece when Palm City was putting in there in the CRA and that other piece of property adjoining to it, or the piece at the end of Sewell's Point Road that was the environmental studies piece, the access to get to the island, you know, I mean, I think there's a lot to be said because I think it is, real estate and land things in Martin County is completely different and wouldn't be the same skillset. But I would support going and just to see what it looks like. And in the meantime, going in and proving this, because this always has, it does have the piece in there that says we can come out if we don't want to continue doing it. So I mean, but I appreciate the discussion.
So I, I come at it at a little different angle. I, I think the board should have their attorney. We use Tyson on demand if we have an issue. That was kind of the beauty of having a local firm here in Martin County. I would like to continue having our board attorney. If Mr. Maine wants to go out and look for an in-house attorney to replace Sniffin and Spellman and all the other attorneys and that specifically addresses those school law, like ESC issues and school issues, I 100% support that. But I do think that the board should have their own attorney.
What if we left all the specialty ones alone and just replaced Sniffin and Spellman with an in-house lawyer for all of their needs? That way, whenever we had anything for labor negotiations or anything that Sniffin and Spellman takes care of, we would have them down the hall to go ask, and maybe we could get things done quicker than leave the specialty ones where they are.
Yeah, and I could 100% support the superintendent if he wants to hire someone in-house to handle those issues. I know that it's sometimes easier to have someone with labor relations specifically in-house to be able to strategize and talk and, you know, have executive sessions and not have to do everything over Zoom. I would, I 100% support that.
I think that's where all of this triggered for me. You know, we're, we're getting executive sessions canceled because the person who represents is in, is in a trial. Or you call and you don't get a response for a few days. We need the information. As far as Mr. George is concerned, do you want to come on full-time? I know you have a practice. This, this is not personal. This is just availability and the expense. It's just really expensive. And like I said, every month when I get that and I see that I personally had to speak to you and what it cost, I just, I don't, I hesitate to call because I don't want to run up a bill like that. That's, I guess maybe it's personal for me. I just, I feel guilty that we're spending that kind of money on a phone call when I could just go to your office and sit down. You'd, yeah, you'd still charge me, but you would be there. I could, you would be a staff and you would be getting a salary as opposed to paying per minute or hour or whatever it is. That's where I'm coming from. I'm trying to figure out a way to consolidate so that the district doesn't spend the money that they're spending on the attorney fees. And that's basically where I'm coming from. But I like the idea of maybe getting an in-house for those things that, that you're talking about. Because I think it, I think it will better serve the district that they have someone in-house that they can just walk down the hall and they don't have to wait for a callback.
So I, I do, I will, we've been down this road before, and some of the things that we have found are, number one, the quality of the attorneys that we are able to hire. I'll be honest, we haven't, all of the things that you can't, one person cannot possibly do all the things that the school district needs because there are so many. Like, we often, I know we have hired very specific attorneys for ESC cases that we have had. We have hired a different attorney, even when we had a staff attorney. We have hired for litigation for very specific issues that we've had, lawsuits, workers' compensation. There's no possible way that one person is going to be, is going to solve the problem that you, what you're saying. You're still going to have to contract with a land use attorney because they don't, they specialize. It's like, you know, finding a doctor to treat every ailment is not possible either. So it's very similar to that. So I understand where you're coming from, and we've all been, yeah. And we've had this discussion ever so often, and we always come back after talking with our staff and really evaluating what the issues are, that we, really, even if we got a staff attorney, we're not going to eliminate as much as you think we will, you know, just because of the specialty services that are needed. But I, I'd support the superintendent. If he finds that great candidate that he would like to have as a staff attorney, I 100% support that.
Yeah, I think in order to find somebody that has labor, ESC contracts, and education law is impossible. I mean, I think that's, that's just going to be, I mean, or it's going to be, I mean, you think the, the Sniffin and Spellman bill is high now when you have to pay that guy to be here all the time. That's really going to be high. And that, and then that isn't, so even though you have an attorney down the hall who's handling those four areas that you could pop in and ask a question of, you still, to Marcia's point, you still need the board attorney who's looking at it from the point of view from the board, you know, I mean, so you've got a, a kind of, I, I did see the thing that Carter did that broke out those attorney things, and I asked him if he could take Sniffin and Spellman's bill and break it...
And I asked him if he could take Sniffin and Spellman's bill and break it into the pieces. So we would see the labor relations and we would see the ESE part, et cetera. So you could see where, where the, the piece, you know, because I think, so what you're looking at is the implementation of recent policies and recent legislation has added a, a nuance that I think if we had any of the attorneys that we had in-house in the, during my time here to deal with those things, it would have been a disaster. I mean, I think those people wouldn't, wouldn't have been able to get out of a box to be able to figure out what to do. I mean, so having somebody who understands the policy, understands the law and can break it down and say, this is what you need to do, I think is a really specialized thing that, that just the guy who says, I know how to do education law, it isn't going to be able to, to handle. And I think the other thing is, which I appreciate Mr. Main doing, is as we're doing these policies, is to do, is to go back, and I've talked to Diane about this, is to circle back for all those policies that we've adopted that were not a Neola template. Because if you adopt as the template, then Neola is keeping up with, the service that we're paying for has them keeping up with legislative changes and has them keeping up with how you have to correct it. But during the periods of time for the ones that we adopted not using the Neola template and doing major modifications to it, obviously, we have to do what the law is. But we have a policy that might not mesh with what the true law is because nobody's looking at that. I mean, that's just a policy that's sitting out there because there isn't anyone looking at it, so.
Well, and I, I keep hearing the labor relations come up. And no offense to my attorney friends, but we, you don't have to be an attorney to specialize in labor relations. So if, if that's truly a need that we see as a school board or a school district, then maybe that's something we need to consider in our organizational structure. And, and that position should, in my mind, should be housed in HR. But you do not have to be an attorney to do that. So there are specialty programs that train just for labor relations. And, and I don't mean just negotiating with the union. I mean, all of the, any type of investigation, all of the things that go along with.
Employee relations. Yeah, the labor employee relations.
Or maybe we have someone internally that would like to pursue that, that we could invest in and train them to take on that responsibility that is not already an attorney. And then we would all, always have our attorneys for backup.
Because that person would always check back with the attorney before we would implement anything or sign anything. I mean, that would be part of their function. But I think that's a, that's a good solution. I think that may be more viable than trying to find somebody who can do ESE and who can do contracts and who could, you know, to check all those boxes. I think if we peeled the labor piece out, obviously not now while we're in the middle of something. But I mean, if, if a longer-term plan is, is to kind of figure out who we can get to do labor so we can transition over to somebody who, I think that's a solution.
Thank you. So I'll move approval of 3.06. Tyson?
I have a mo- second, sorry.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Roberts, a second by Ms. Russell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 3.07. Do I have a motion?
Sure, I'll move approval of that.
Second.
Have a motion by Ms. Roberts, a second by Ms. Russell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, item 18.01, we have no school board travel. 18.02 is renewal of the group Medicare Advantage and Supplement Insurance for retirees. Mr. Calderon? Are there any questions from the board first to get that started? So I have a motion by Ms. Roberts. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second by Ms. Pritchett. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up is 18.03, requisitions for purchases over $100,000. Are there any questions from the board? Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve 18.03?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Russell, a second by Ms. Pritchett. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 18.04, the maximum class size flexibility for students enrolling after October survey period.
Are, question?
Okay.
Dr. Miller?
I just want to know how this impacts our Title I schools.
Sure, so, thank you very much. The Florida statute gives us the ability after date certain for survey two, which happened to be last Friday, the 13th. We, right now, are going through the data corrections period. And then after that period, this flexibility allows class sizes to increase above what the limits are prescribed in statute, up by three or five, depending on grade level. Now, we always take a look very carefully at our Title I schools, understanding the circumstances, challenges, and also the unique characteristics of each school. So as students do enroll, those are conversations that we have with the principal. We then rely on our Director of Title I Migrant and ELL Services. She will also weigh in, looking at comparability, looking at class size for Title I, ensuring that we maintain proper class size in those. So I hear, what I'm reading into, what you're saying is that we want to act, we want to take some extra care to protect our Title I schools and make sure that we don't increase their class sizes to the best of our ability. Thank you.
Perfect. Microphone. Say that again into your microphone.
Motion to approve 18.04, maximum class size flexibility.
I have a motion by Ms. Pritchett, a second by Mr. Di Trilese. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I have a comment, too.
Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Roberts?
And Dr. Miller, can you look into, I know we talked in, this has to do with class size. I know we talked in February about the report that came from the audit that was done for Treasure Coast Classical Academy. And one of the findings on that audit was the auditor was questioning whether they had violated class size or whether they were doing that correctly, which impacts how we give them funds, et cetera. And since we know, oh, and the answer from Optima, their management company, was they don't know what they're talking about, we know what we're talking about. So you had two conflicting reports at the same time. You had the audit that said you're violating class size and you had the management company saying there was no violation. And in February, we talked about having the district go back and look at that and, and see whether, what our opinion was as their charter sponsor person as to whether who was right, who was wrong. Because we were getting members of the community who were asking, well, who is right, who is wrong? You know, are they violating, are they not violating? But I think we have the expertise and skill in order to do that. So if you could look at that and come back and, and tell us so that we can then report to the community. I know that we had some legislative people who were interested in whether that was true or not true. But if we can get an answer to that, that would kind of close that loop and be able to have some accountability to them. But I appreciate that.
Sure, and just for clarification, that was for the February survey count?
I, I think, no. It was, at the February meeting was when I think I shared the audit and that's when we discussed it. So if you wanted to go listen to the conversation, it's in that recording from the February meeting. I think that's the date. But it's whatever date I shared that audit piece was, but, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are you talking about the independent?
Yes.
That audit that somebody?
Yes, that, that the TCCA Board hired an auditor to audit their operations and had several findings. And some of those findings, of course, we have no control, no interest, no dog in the race. The two things that we did have interest in, or from my point of view, which we discussed as a board in February, the two issues were, one was the class size piece. The second piece was the safety piece. And I believe the superintendent is addressing and taking care of the safety piece to make sure that loop gets closed as well. But if we can get those things off of our plate, especially as we're walking into legislative session, it would be nice to be responsive to those people that we want to be our friends that are going to Tallahassee if we can answer their questions.
Understood, thank you. Okay, next up, we have 18.05, approval to piggyback Sourcewell Cooperative Contract for copiers, printers and multifunction devices. Are there any questions? I have a motion?
Move approval?
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Di Trilese, a second by Ms. Russell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 18.06 is Stewart Middle School Project F, Project FFE Proposal. Are there any questions?
Move approval?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Roberts, a second by Ms. Pritchett. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 18.07 is the Stewart Middle School Project Early Procurement Proposal.
Move approval?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Roberts and a second by Ms. Pritchett. Are there any questions from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, moving on, we are going into our first review of school board policies and to approve the advertising. Our first policy is, sorry, get to the right page. Is policy number 6320, which is purchasing and contracting for commodities, commodities and contractual services. Are there any questions from the board on this? Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this policy? Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the advertising?
Motion to approve the advertising for 19.01.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Russell, a second by Ms. Pritchett. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 19.02 is policy 6322, construction, contracting and bidding. This is a new policy. Are there any questions on this policy? Are there any comments from the board, or from the, excuse me, from the public on this policy? Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the advertising for this policy? I have a motion by Mr. Di Trilese, a second by Ms. Pritchett. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 19.03 is policy 6440, cooperative purchasing. Are there any questions from the board? Any comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
I'm moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Di Trilese, a second by Ms. Pritchett. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 19.04 is policy 6540, professional consultant. Are there any questions from the board? Any comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Roberts, a second by Ms. Russell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, now we are on to the public review of school board policies. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on item number, or item 20, 20.01, which is curriculum development? 20.01 and the policy number is 2210. Okay? Any comments from the board? Do I have a motion to approve 22, policy 2210?
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Pritchett, a second by Ms. Russell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 20.02 is policy 2417, which incorporates changes from House Bills 379 and 1069. It's the comprehensive health and life skills education. Are there any questions from the board? Any comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion to approve policy 2417?
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Pritchett, a second by Ms. Russell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 20.03 is policy 2421, which is career and technical education. This policy incorporates changes from Senate Bill 240. Are there any questions from the board? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve policy 2421?
I'm moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Di Trilese, a second by Ms. Pritchett. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up is item 20.04, which is policy 2520, selection and adopt, adoption of instructional materials. Any questions from the board on this policy? Any comments from the public? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, motion by Ms. Pritchett, a second by Mr. Di Trilese. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 20.05 is instructional materials program. Excuse me, this policy number is 2521 and incorporates changes from House Bill 5101. Are there any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Pritchett, a second by Ms. Russell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 20.06 is policy number 2522, which is challenges to adoption or use of instructional, library or reading list materials. This policy incorporates changes from House Bills 5101 and 1069. Are there any questions from the board on this policy? Ms. Roberts?
So I can understand and appreciate the, the comments about striking the language that said, no challenge material may be removed solely because it presents ideas that may be unpopular or offensive to some. But I know at the same time that the Neola template is taking that piece out. And I think that the reason that it is coming out is not only because of the Neola template, but because when you're saying, no challenge material may be removed solely because it is offensive, just take it offensive to some, right? I mean, just break it down to offensive to some. It may be removed because it is offensive to some. I mean, it's, you know, you have to meet the requirements of what the law says you have to do. And I think leaving that in there makes it contradictory to the process of the, the challenge, the special magistrate, you know, et cetera. So I'm sensitive, but I understand why it needs to come out.
Okay, so do, is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this? Okay, um, will you, someone please get some forms? You don't have to fill it out before you come up, but if you could give it to us when you, before you leave. So Sydney Thomas?
I, I don't understand the resistance to adding something in there where there can be a challenge to the challenge. I read through, this was so tedious, every single, we did public records requests of all of the emails back and forth about the book Challenge Forms that went through by Julie Marshall between all three high schools. They had really professional, educated teams of educators read all of these books, no extra payment, review all of them. And they all came back with recommendations to keep the books, with the exception of maybe one at one of the high schools. These are actual educators, PhDs, master's levels. They know these books, they know these acclaimed authors. The actual educators read the law, read- The actual educators read the law, read the books on their own time and came back and wanted to keep all of them in there. Then something happened, there was some sort of meeting that people were smart enough to keep off the record. And then all of a sudden, all three principals say, okay, we're taking all of the books off the shelf. I have my ideas on what happened, but here's the thing, you have a book called The Storyteller by Jodi Picoult taken off? That has nothing, that has no porn in it. There's like a kiss scene in it, maybe, it's one line. That book's been removed. That's about the Holocaust. That's why people are upset, right? You have Stamped From the Beginning, that's literally, it's a history book. It's a history book. It talks about the slavery and the history of slavery in the entire world. It's thick. And those are just two examples. You've seen these stories in the media about Antango Makes Three, where Moms for Liberty are trying to get books banned simply because it refers to a same-sex couple or partner. Not all of them are like that. All this energy is going to books like Gender Queer and This Book is Gay with a couple of passages that are, like, it's valid conversation to have because some of the passages are like, whoa. I get, I understand wanting to have that conversation. But while everybody's focused on these three or four books, you've got 80 more that are getting taken out for really unjustifiable reasons by people that haven't read them. Probably a lot, most of the people making these decisions outside of the educators, because they actually put in the effort to read the books, are just taking them off. And you have the public showing up, meeting after meeting after meeting on their free time. I know I'm talking, but they keep showing up. I know this didn't happen before. Like, board meetings are usually dead. And they're being so consistent with their passion that they want you to look at books like The Storyteller and Stamped From the Beginning and some of the other ones and reevaluate because educators weren't actually listened to. And there's just such resistance, why can't you just add that in there? Why can't you just add another process to reevaluate these books? Instead of letting one parent who didn't read them and who's like the chair of a hate group just automatically do it because you're scared of retribution? I just, it's really frustrating to see your community show up again and again and again. Your educators show up again and again and again. And we have to do it, it's the law, but it's not. So what is the resistance?
Thank you.
Am I allowed to ask the question or it's just a comment?
No, it's not dialogue, back and forth, but, thank you. Wes Rexrode?
So this policy, after reading it, it really seems to violate quite a few things you guys have talked about. First of all, you know, tomorrow you're having Unity Day and bullying has no place in the society. But now we're enacting a policy where a single parent can come up here and read a passage and any one of you can determine that this book doesn't belong in the district. So essentially, you're overriding every parent in the district based on what your own judgment. I mean, Mr. Di Tralisi, you back in the April meeting talked about how you should determine what your kid should have access to. And I totally agree. But I don't believe that you should determine what my child should have access to. Nor should I think, you know, Julie Marshall or any other member. That's my decision. If you don't want your kid to read it, that's fine. But I don't want my child to be denied diverse viewpoints. And it seems like we're using this to bully members of the LTGBQ community and others. I just heard a few minutes ago, which I didn't know, you know, a lot of people complaining about attorneys for the school district being really expensive. But part of the, part of reading this is that if you ban the book, then another parent like me could challenge that. And then you have to pay an attorney to talk to the state education commissioner. So it seems like this policy is going to increase your legal costs. At the same time, you're trying to decrease your legal costs. And I mean, I know I'm just a nuclear operator, but it doesn't seem to pass the logic test. And finally, it's, you know, I just wonder what next on the slippery slope of banning books? Are we going to ban teaching evolution because it offends somebody? Are we going to ban teaching at the age of the earth, it's 4.6 billion years old because radiometric dating says it is, but the Bible says it's 6,000 years old? Are we going to ban talking about the real causes of the Civil War being slavery instead of tariffs? Are we going to ban talking about the Fugitive Slave Act of 1850? Talking about the Spanish Inquisition? Talking about the Crusades, talking about the Saint and Witch Charles? Where does it end? These are public schools. And each, every student that goes to the public school has a right to know the truth. If people want to put their kids in private schools that are religious-based, they have every right to do so. It's been their way all along. But I ask you to seriously consider this policy and what it's going to mean in terms of finances for the district, legal costs for the district, and hate and discontent for the district. As Sidney just said, every meeting, 99% of the people that show up are talking about, we don't want book bans. But yet we're following the issues of a tiny minority. Thanks again for your time.
Thank you. Okay, we have one more public comment. If you could just speak your name and then I'll get your form after.
Hello, hi. So I wanted to speak on this issue. And so my name is Emmanuel Aramas. And I'm actually with a group that, that works pretty well with Moms for Liberty. We're a group called Turning Point USA. And we actually support having certain books not be allowed for students. And some of these books were already removed. And some of those books, we actually support being removed because it's just inappropriate for students to read. So there are people out there, there are people that are for keeping books, but there are also people that are against keeping books. So just to let the board be aware that some books carry a lot of perversion in it, very inappropriate for students within public schools of all ages. And they should not be in a school library. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that'd like to speak on this? Any comments from the board? What I will say about this policy is that of the books that have been reassigned to different schools, moved, whatever, there hasn't been a single decision that has come to this board for, according to this policy. We haven't reviewed any of them. Those have been made at the school level or at the district level before it came to us by the process. I'm, I don't know, maybe that'll get to the point where one does come to us for review. But so far, there have not been any that have been, come to the board for a final decision. Just for clarity's sake. Okay, do I have a motion to approve policy 2522?
Move.
I have a motion by Mr. Di Tralisi, a second by Ms. Russell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 55, 20.07, which is policy 5511, which is dress code. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this? Any board comment? Do I have a motion?
Move approval of dress code, PO 5511.
I have a motion by Mr. Di Tralisi, a second by Ms. Russell. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Me.
Motion carries for one. Item 20.08, which is policy 6450, local purchasing. Any board comment? Any public comment? Do I have a motion to approve policy 6450?
Move.
I have a motion by Mr. Di Tralisi, a second by Ms. Pritchett. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 20.09, which is policy 8330, student records. Any public comment? Any board comment? Do I have a motion to approve 20.09, policy 8330?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Pritchett, a second by Mr. Di Tralisi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 20.10, which is policy 8475, criminal background screening for contractor access. Any public comments? Any board comments? Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
I have a motion by Mr. Di Tralisi, a second by Ms. Pritchett. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 20.11, policy 8500, food service program. Is there any public comment? Any board comment? Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Russell, a second by Ms. Pritchett. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 20.12, policy 9160, public attendance at school events. Any public comment? Any board comment? Do I have a motion?
Move approval of 209160.
I have a motion by Mr. Di Tralisi, a second by Ms. Pritchett. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 20.13, policy 9200, volunteers. Is there any public comment? Is there any board comment? Do I have a motion to approve policy 9200?
Move approval of 9200 policy number.
I have a motion by Mr. Di Tralisi, a second by Ms. Pritchett. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 20.14 is policy 9215, direct support organizations. Is there any public comment? Any board comment? Do I have a motion to approve?
To approve?
I have a motion by Ms. Russell, a second by Ms. Pritchett. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 20.15 is policy 9800, charter schools. Is there any public comment? Any board comment?
I'm sure.
Yes.
Oh, never mind, I was looking for the changes. There are just a couple of minor changes in this.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Move approval.
I have a motion by Mr. Di Tralisi, a second by Ms. Pritchett. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, next up is open to the board, Mr. Di Tralisi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to, there were a lot of misinformation going on about book bans. We are not banning books. The books that have been removed from our libraries have been, are available in public libraries. They're available in other schools. Some may be available in other school districts, some may not be. But we have approximately, Mr. Maine, if you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think I'm wrong. We have better than 400,000 books in our libraries in Martin County schools. And I believe the last time I was told it was 94 books that were removed in accordance with Florida statutes. And I think it's important that people know that Martin County School Board didn't write these laws, these statutes. They're not something that we chose to do, they're something that we choose to follow the law. And when a parent comes with concerns, they bring those concerns to staff and they give their reasons for concerns. And if they follow the law, then the books either get removed or don't get removed. So I find it very, no, I don't find it odd. I think it's just part of the time we're in today in this country is that 94 books out of almost a half a million is considered a book banning when you can go to the Martin County Public Library, any one of them, and probably get each and every one of those books for your children. So that's all I really had to say today, Madam Chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Roberts?
Sure, I'd like to thank Mr. Maine for presenting to the legislative delegation. That was well received. I'd also like to thank Burlington for their generous donation to J.D. Parker. And have a shout out to Food Service for their Mario-themed school lunch week, which I, if I had known before that that was the theme, I would have dressed more appropriately. But I did enjoy wearing the hairnet, which I did wear for the entire rest of the day. And I'm probably going to be wearing more often now. And then the last comment I had was the Ed Foundation books that they're doing, can we make sure that they get reviewed prior to their distribution and placement? And that's all I had. Thanks.
Ms. Russell?
I don't have any comments this evening. Thank you.
Ms. Pritchett?
Yes, I, like Ms. Roberts, attended Bessie Creek Elementary and served food for two hours. And I went home and I was so tired. I can't imagine, those women, they do that every single day and they do it with a smile on their face. And they love those kids up so much. And it was incredibly satisfying to just go there and participate. I was really, really impressed and thanks for the opportunity to let us do that.
That's all. Did you get a hairnet too?
No, I wore a Luigi hat, L, right? You could say loser, but it was a green Luigi hat. And the staff had Mario hats, so, yeah.
Hairnet was really the?
Yeah, I, I thought it looked very nice. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm sorry that I missed that this year. And in addition, not just the women, but the men who work in our food service department are doing amazing job. But, and the food is so appealing. Like, cafeteria food did not look like that when I was in school. And it's really, they're so creative with what they do and it's so appealing to kids. So it's really, things have changed in a very good way. I know. In a very, it's, yes, it's changed in a very good way. So thank you to our food service staff for all you do. And that's it. Mr. Maine, did you have anything final?
Nothing this evening, ma'am. Thank you.
All right, perfect. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.